The council ordinary meeting, the time is 9am and I now declare the meeting open. Mount Isa City Council would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, the Kalkadoons, and pay respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. And we'd also like to extend, acknowledge our respects to all First Nation people in Australia. I'd just like to remind everyone that this ordinary meeting of Mount Isa City Council is livestreamed and recorded in accordance with the council's recording of council meetings policy. By being a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. And by remaining in chambers, it is assumed your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. Well, I'd like to kick off now with a prayer from Pastor Keith Christie from the Christian Outreach Centre. Thank you Keith.
Thank you so much. I just pray and thank you today for our councillors and Lord Mayor, Father. I just pray for wisdom and understanding in all things, Lord. I pray that Mount Isa City will be known as a safe city to raise up families and, and Lord, where children can grow up and get a good job and, Lord, let this be a city where we all work together in unity, Father. Lord, we come against powers of darkness who try to cause our young people to crime, Lord God. But God, we just pray for you to move over them. Let your love, let your love just pour over those young people to show them a better way. Father, and I thank you so much today. I pray for this council to have great favour, Lord, great favour with parliament, great favour in all the areas they need it, Lord. And I thank you for each one of them. I pray your blessing upon each one, Father, in Jesus' wonderful name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much for that. Thank you. And that takes us to item three, which is apologies and leave of absence. And would someone like to move that in accordance with section 277 of the Local Government Regulation 2021, the following participants will be taking part in this meeting via teleconference and it will be noted as in attendance. And that is councillor Kim Coghlan. Can I have someone move that motion?
Move.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Someone second that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, all those in favour, and that's carried. Thank you. I'd also like someone to move that council accepts the following supplementary report, and that's item 14.3, the proposed campsite management agreement Camerewell Town Common, and that's Western Severance. Can someone move that motion please?
Move, Barwick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Someone second that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. All those in favour? And that is carried. Councillor Coghlan, I just want to check that you can hear and that we can hear you.
Yes, can hear everything.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, so I am just jumping ahead here. Now, it takes us to item four, which is public participation. So I will now suspend the meeting for members of the public to take the floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to address the meeting today. Just got some comments on the Outback at Isa report I had, but it should be up to $15 million spent on updating it. The entrance is boring. I feel it's not promoted. Like, from now on, there's hardly any travellers. So they should get the schools involved more. But when they're, like every year, say, grade seven, they should all go and see it. I've been here 35 years and haven't been there for 15 years. So the locals should be public, should be encouraged to go there. The lagoon is unbelievable. And I don't really, I don't think the existing population or Mount Isa population realise the asset it is. And just spending money, $15 million plus a million dollars for consultancy fees, which is unbelievable. I feel Mount Isa, the local population should be more involved, especially now it's very quiet as far as tourists concerned. Because it's a marvellous asset. In the report, they said the machinery down the Cobalt Street is junk rubbish, which should be all taken to the dump or whatever. That is all history of Mount Isa. And the people who made that report, they have no feeling for the rotary clubs, the amount of work they went out to stations to bring that machinery in. And driving past here this morning, it's dead, the machine is sitting there. But unless it's got a bar in the few photos of the history of that machinery, so people are interested. And perhaps that's not the good location for it to be, it's not easily accessible. But it's just old machinery sitting there, but it's all got amazing history. And that should be shown, so people can read about it, can visualise how we use it. So there's so much history of it, because rotary members, they went out bush, spent weekends bringing that machinery in. So there's a lot of work and love's gone into all that. Also, there's a wonderful statue out the front of the so-called boring entrance. But it's got no sign of Mount Isa. People should be, it should be, attract people to take photos of it, but have a sign, "Mount Isa Mine". Miners. It's a fabulous statue, but it's just sitting there. There's no emotion about it. And I'd like the committee, council, tourist bureau to look into that promotion, promote it more to the locals. So the next six months, locals use it. They have perhaps functions there to bring people there and then they talk to people and get them to go and see it. And schoolchildren should be taken as a class. So it's $10 an entrance, which will keep you upbeat, but what's $10? You can only get a drink in a McDonald's for $10. So at present, I think it's something like $30 for a local to go there. So there's no incentive for a local to go there. So if the council could emphasise it, the public got to be encouraged to use it more, to go there, to see it. Then they talk, because working out for the greatest meaning, since we have no North West Star anymore, it's only a place what we've got. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you Peter. Well, I guess we'll start with the master plan. So we're hoping to spend the state and federal government's money on the master plan and not ratepayers. Now, there's a lot of funding that goes all around Australia and definitely all around Queensland and we need to make sure that we capture some of that. Tourism is extremely important to Mount Isa, so we need to keep up to date. And one of the great things about the Outback at Isa is the underground mine aspect, which is phenomenal. It's brilliant. But Charter's Towers is developing a very similar tourism event themselves. So we need to be, make sure we're updated with the times so we can get the tourists come through. And if someone comes through in a couple of years' time, there's something else that I can come through and look at. So it's really important that we stay up to date. We need the master plan. It isn't perfect and that's why we've gone out to the community and said, "Give us feedback", and that's really important. And we have invited the community to come along and sit with the actual consultants and give them feedback to their face so that they could... So a lot of the things that they're reporting is what the community have told them. They think it's boring. They think that it needs updating. So our community has played a big part in this, which is great, and that's what we want. And they still have a chance to give us more feedback. The plan isn't locked in. There's a lot of little aspects that we need to lock down. But we do need to have, and I hate the term, shovel-ready projects to go. So when the right funding comes in, we can start updating. So that's where we are with that one. We would love volunteers to come and get involved. So if anyone does want to get involved, more than welcoming. You know, Australia Day, what we did, especially with COVID, we opened it up to the Mount Isa public for free. And we had a great response. So I do know the schools come in and they, so the schools do utilise Outback at Isa on a regular basis. So that, we do promote that. And we are looking for different opportunities with Outback at Isa. So, but that's why it's really important that we don't just let it sit and not do anything. We do have to update it and we do have to move with the times. Otherwise, we'll end up with a very old building that nobody's going to see. So I don't know if that's answered some of your questions, but yeah. Yeah, oh look, but we'll take... Yeah, no, definitely. And we're looking for ideas exactly like that. So we'll definitely take that on board. It's the ideas from the community that we want. So thank you so much, Peter. Do we have anyone else who'd like to present?
Thanks very much for the opportunity, councillor. My name's John Power. I was born here and raised here, went to school here, lived in the area for many, many years. My father came here in the 1920s. I've got a brother still living here, I've got friends still living here. That's why I'm interested in what I've got to ask. I'll put the downside in there. From around 1924 to 1963, Mount Isa was part of and administered by the Concurry-Shire Council, which is not a very well-known fact, I don't think. A lot of people don't seem to realise that. During these early years, Mount Isa always had elected representatives on that council to represent Mount Isa in the district. And at least one of these elected representatives was chairman of the Concurry-Shire Council, even though he lived in Mount Isa. I'm just curious to why the City Council doesn't recognise each past councillor. In the early days, it would have been many, many of them, going back to 1963 to 1924, 25. I noticed a plaque in the Concurry-Shire Council's shield with all their names on it, maybe something like that. Elected representatives from Mount Isa who did serve on that council.
Thank you. Sorry, what was your first name? John?
John.
John Power? John, that sounds like a fantastic 100-year project. It sounds like a fantastic 100-year project. Is actually getting an honour board established for all councillors who have served Mount Isa and also, I guess, Concurry-Shire when Mount Isa was being established 98 years ago. So we did, we have the chair of the 100-year committee here, so it's something we can take back to the committee. And if we're going to do it, we, let's do it right. So that could be something that would be, we could have an honour board or something to that effect. Is that, is that what you're mainly?
Yeah, yeah, that sounds fine. It's just that I was amazed. I mean, I'm not putting, having to go at anybody, but I've been to the council here a couple of times. I passed through here about four months ago. I don't live in there, I live in Western Australia. We passed through here about four months ago and I come into the council asking about the Concurry-Shire Council. And like the star, no offence to the star, they have no idea.
Yep.
Nobody sort of knows, realises that it was part of the Concurry-Shire Council. I mean, even Quippy Power or Quippy Down at Bushy Park, he was on it, Concurry-Shire Council. I'm sure Bob Catter, father, grandfather, he was on it, wasn't he? He didn't live in Concurry.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And we're losing a lot of history, there's no doubt about it. And we have a lot of historians in Mount Isa, which we're very lucky. But they're not always going to be here, so we do really need to capture our history. And I think the 100-year committee is a, is a good start, you know? And it's great that we've got community people coming in and saying, "Hey, what about this?", because it's a great idea. So...
Well, even imagine like in the 1940s, the road from here to Concurry would have been like, you'd have to drive down there, probably get on the bus on the way down there, but then come back. So it wouldn't have been like coming here and having a meet, that would have taken a day to get down, a day to get back, all sorts of money.
Yeah, definitely. And they would have done it a lot tougher than any of us have ever done it. Yeah. No, we're definitely happy to look into that. I think that's a great suggestion. And if you have any more, we, you know, drop us an email because we're looking for ideas to, you know, recognise events and people in the 100 years, but also we can, that's something we can continue on with.
What happened before then? Oh, Concurry, is it?
Yep.
Mount Isa, there's a lot of new people coming, not a fair way. Get the history, you know? Now, you mentioned the 100-year anniversary. I saw a book the other day, about a 90th anniversary book.
Yep.
I thought that was a bit unusual. I thought maybe 50 years or 100 years. They had a 90-year one, so they got a 100-year one as well or?
Oh, look, I can't speak for the 90-year book. I'm assuming that they just were very happy to be 90 and thought it was worth celebrating. We have definitely got a lot of projects on the boil and we are talking about a book. We're talking about heaps of stuff actually. And we actually put out, so you're not from Mount Isa or you are? Are you from Mount Isa or you're just passing through? Yeah. So you probably saw the survey we put out where we asked for lots of ideas and... Oh, okay. So we've been really, we've actually been engaging with the community quite a lot with, what do you want to see, what do you want to have, what do you think we should be commemorating? So we've really gone to the community and asked them. And we still are, even though we've got a committee now and we've got subcommittees for that committee and we're really working with the community on that. So hopefully, if you could come back in '23, there'll be a lot of great stuff happening here in Mount Isa.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Okay, so... Can I just give you the microphone and then it'll be on the livestream?
I just wanted to point out that an incorrect statement was made earlier, that there is no North West Star. That is incorrect. The North West Star still exists. We still live and breathe and we're still publishing. Yes, we're not printing, but we're still online. Thank you.
Yeah, and and it, and you can, you can get online. They've got, the North West Star's got its own website. So if anyone is, hasn't been reading the North West Star, I encourage you to get on and get your subscription because that's where I'll get all my news. Okay, so which one are we going for first? Girl Guides? So Mount Isa City Council have been raising funds through casual for calls, which is every Friday, if you come into council, you'll see everyone looking pretty casual. And they all hand in gold coin donations and a lot of times a lot more than that. So they have picked a couple of really worthy causes to donate to today. And one of them is the Mount Isa Girl Guides. And the Girl Guides help girls, young and young women, to grow into confident, self-respecting, responsible community members. This donation will help more young women and girls in our community to learn new skills and become leaders. This donation will also support the club in purchasing a dishwasher for cooking activities. Are we doing them separate or together? Separate. Yeah, so if you could please come up. So it's $207.70, but just a reminder, it's from the staff, you know? So really proud of the Mount Isa City Council staff because they, they want to participate in helping charities themselves. So this is not from the ratepayers. Would you like to have?
This is amazing. We have really been involved since COVID hit. We struggled for leaders, we struggled for parent helpers. We lost a lot of girls just before COVID hit too. So this is going to go back to the girls, definitely. Even though we can't quite get a dishwasher just yet because we have to do other things first. But this is amazing and this will help the girls straight back there without, you know? Because we're all volunteers, we don't get paid. So thank you so much. This is amazing. Thank you.
So the next one that I wanted to give a check to is Scouts. And this one is from August. And the Scouts take part in activities that benefit others and teach them the value of community involvement. From participating in Anzac Day services or citizenship ceremonies, local government projects, Scouts contribute their time to support our community. Mount Isa City Council hopes this donation will support upcoming leaders and make a difference in Mount Isa. If I can welcome Albert to the front? And this one was from August. That's why there are different amounts depending who puts in. $314.54. And again, it's from the Mount Isa City Council staff.
First of all, thank you to both council and the staff here. This is really graciously appreciated. As Representative for Guides said, since COVID, it's been a real struggle for us, both with members. We are rebuilding the Mount Isa Scout Group at the moment, but we're a long way to go. So, as we discover. Every little dollar we get. On the line. The staff.
And that's always a good part of our job is to be able to hand out some money. Now, I am just... All right, so that takes us to item five, which is the confirmation of the previous minutes. Can I get someone to move the motion that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 25th of August 21 be received and the recommendations herein be adopted?
Move, Barwick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Thank you. Seconded by councillor Tully. All those in favour? And that's carried.
Move.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. And that takes us to... Okay, sorry, I'm just... I'm just trying to get my head around this new way of, so the action, so then we go...
Item seven, I think.
Item seven. 5.2. Okay. What page is that on? Sorry. I will get used to this. Oh, yep. Yep, 21. Sorry. So we actually had a special meeting, so, and that's item 5.2. So the minutes of the special meeting held on the 1st of September. Can I get someone to move the motion that the minutes of the special meeting held on the 1st of September 2021 be received and the recommendations herein be adopted? Thank you councillor Fortune. Can I get someone to second that?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. All those in favour? And that's carried.
Yes.
And that takes us to item six, which is the actions from the previous council meetings, which is nil. And then that takes us to item seven, which is declarations of conflicts of interest. Does anyone, any councillors have any conflicts of interest that need to declare?
No.
Thank you.
No.
Item eight, Meryl Minnit, with nil. Item nine, reading and consideration of the correspondence, which is 9.1. And can someone move the motion that council receives and accepts the August 2021 correspondence report?
Move, Barwick.
Thank you. Someone second that motion?
Streton.
Thank you councillor Streton. All those in favour? And that's carried. Oh, sorry. Did anyone want to speak to any of that?
Oh, I do, actually, Madam Mayor. Thanks. Just one item. I was interested in the, the letter received from Professor Bob Brown from Central Queensland University around support service in Mount Isa, advisers, that there's 170 people participating in, in, you know, degrees and such at the moment, online, I would guess most of those would be. But I just wonder if we could invite him out, perhaps to, to, you know, talk to council about possible, you know, other infrastructure and that out here? And I know we're sort of heading down a few different pathways with that, but it might be, his response was interesting, I thought.
We're, we're putting together a working group in regard to trying to get a university presence in Mount Isa. And I think we should be inviting all the universities to be a part of it and talk about, because there's no doubt, everybody I know is doing a tertiary degree online at the moment. And, you know, it's crazy how many people are actually with the universities all around Australia. So having something central or something a little bit more established in Mount Isa would be perfect. Yep, definitely. Is there anything else with the minutes of the correspondence?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I'm sure the councillors will recall that we've got a motion at the LGAQ conference in relation to university presence in regional and remote areas. The other one is the, the mayor certainly had a meeting with the representative from JCU.
Yes.
And that, that person, Mr Christie, I think his name was?
Yep. So Dan Christie, the head of engineering from JCU. So JCU are very interested in, in, in talking to us as well. So they are keen to be part of a working group to see what we could come up with. So University of Queensland are very interested. So all, all the mines that I've talked to are very, very interested as well. So there's a lot of support for this.
Yep, sounds good.
Anything else? All those in favour? And that's carried. Sorry, I jumped the gun before. Okay, so that takes us to the executive services reports. And for this one is, and would someone like to move the, who's that? All right, okay. So I will hand you over to councillor George Fortune.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. There's a recommendation there that council agreed to undertake works to ensure building and electrical compliance on the land described as lots 47 and 48 on Crown Plan RD 220.
Thank you. Would someone like to mention, second this motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Would you like to speak on behalf of this motion, councillor Fortune?
Yeah, this is, the council's considerations requested in regard to proposed works to be undertaken on vacant council reserve. On that, on the lots that are described there, the land is opposite the airport, formerly the old Spanish Club. And there needs to be a lot of remedial works to get that site and those buildings up to compliance to be put out for lease to the community, for community purposes. So I'd, I'd like to, yeah, recommend that the council recommendation be taken and agreed to.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Would anyone else like to speak on this one?
Yeah, thanks. I concur with councillor Fortune. Madam Mayor, it's just another example, I think, of council actively supporting not-for-profits in town. And if this building goes to market and is taken up by a sporting group or a nonprofit group, then that'll be great. Thanks. I think it'd be good to have the building in, in good stead for that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I've got one query as I was, the, so it's the house that's getting the electrical repairs or the actual shed?
Through you, Madam Mayor, it's both, to bring it up to compliance, but predominantly in the house. The other option was to look at demolishing the house is the other one. But the office has recommended going in and fixing the house because that will appeal more to the not-for-profit groups that may lease it out in the future.
Okay.
Okay, if there is no more comments or questions, all those in favour? Oh. Councillor Coglan, just checking, you haven't got a comment on this one?
Yeah, I agree with the motion.
Thank you. All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to ten point two, media and communications report, August 2021, and... Okay, who would like to move this motion?
I'll move, thanks, Madam Mayor. That council receives and accepts the August 2021 media and communications overview report.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Could someone second that motion?
Streton.
Thank you councillor Streton. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
I think, Madam Mayor, it's just an outline of the, the work that's being done during the period for, you know, in our communications and our efforts to get our message out to, to community and to the residents around what's happening with council and, and all the, the aspects of council business during the month. And I think it's quite a good record there, showing, showing our activity there, and it's quite intensive. So, yeah, I'll hand that to the floor, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for a comment on this one?
Um, yes, I'd just like, there's something not correct in the report. On the eighteenth of August, I didn't, I wasn't interviewed by the radio about the universities. Can that be taken out, please?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to item eleven, which is a corporate and community service reports, and I'll hand you over to the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just looking for the motion.
On page forty-eight.
Yeah, I've got it there. It's only too small, yeah.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Uh, so I'll move that council receives and accepts the August 2021 financial overview report.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Someone second that report, please? Thank you councillor McCrae. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of that report?
Yeah, thanks Madam Mayor. So, council continues to accrue revenue, major costs and wages for August 2021, and to present, gain more accuracy for the results of council at the end of the month. Capital expenditure activity remains relatively high due to the carryover from the previous year. Council payables completed in August 2021 for the June 2021 financial year. So, the August to date financial result is three hundred and forty-four K compared to the budget surplus of two point oh four million. And the difference around that is mainly because of the, um, the timing of our capital grants hitting the accounts. Uh, there's a capital summary there. So, generally, we remain marginally ahead of the operating budget, but on a year-to-date, we're behind, and that's again due to the lower capital grants received within the first two months of the year. Uh, we continue to keep a tight control over expenses, and they're tracking to budget, so that's going quite well. We do for a budget review for the September quarter, and that should take place during October twenty-one. Uh, there's a table there showing the outstanding age rates balances, and it's still sitting at seven point five million at the end of August 2021, but there's been considerable work done on that, uh, you know, asking for those rates to, to come in, and there's also been some activity around recoveries for that. Unrestricted cash for the, um, at the end of the period was ten point eight million, but total cash at banks fifty-six point nine million, so that's, we're sitting in a very good position at the moment. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Has anyone got any comments or questions on this one? Councillor Coglan, you have nothing?
No, I'm all good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to eleven point two, which is the environmental charge policy version two, and I'm, I'm assuming this is councillor Streton's one? Is that right?
Yeah.
Yep. Fifty-four.
There you go. The recommendations there is the council adopts the environmental charge policy V two as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Councillor Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of that motion?
Um, yeah, just give a bit of a summary there. Environmental charge policy has been developed as a guideline for the management of the revenue generated from the environmental charge imposed on all ratable properties within the jurisdiction of the Manoisa City Council. Bit of background, environmental charge is one of the sources of revenue for the Manoisa City Council generated from all ratable properties within its jurisdictions. The head of the power for the charge comes from section ninety-four of the Local Government Act 2009 that gives council ability to impose a separate charge on all ratable land in the local government area. In doing so, council can only use funds raised by a separate charge for the specific purpose identified in the revenue statement adopted each year as part of council's annual budget process. This policy has been developed to support the annual revenue statement in providing guidance for the management of environmental charge to undertake various programs, projects, initiatives to deliver environmental outcome as per the policy. And just to give a bit of a, that's what we, we spend a bit of the money on the bat, relocation site, um, so far, so it doesn't go to waste, we are doing things with it.
Yeah. And, and you know, it is one of the many questions, it's, it's a recurring question for me is, what do we do with environmental charge on the rates? So, if anyone is interested, get online and have a look at the document, and it gives you a good idea of, of what council uses it for. Is there any other comments on, or questions? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to eleven point three. Oh, councillor Coglan, you, you're fine?
No, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yep, okay. Eleven point three, and it'll be back to councillor Streton with the environmental and biosecurity overview report for August 2021.
What page would that be on?
Sixty-three.
Hang on. Oh, no, oh, yeah.
Sixty-three.
Hang on.
You need help, councillors.
You laughing, David?
I'm not laughing.
You're joking, thank God, this is not my pad.
I've got two bigger fingers. A recommendation there is council adopt the environmental charge, oh, no, that's the wrong one. Sorry. Which one?
Environmental and biosecurity overview report.
On page sixty-three. We have a new system, so that's why we're sort of all getting, uh, getting used to it.
Recommendations there, council receive and accepts the August 2021 environmental and biosecurity overview report.
Thank you councillor Streton. Can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Councillor Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yes. Environmental and biosecurity services processed to a total of forty-four requests for services and complaints for the month of August, which is fifty-one percent higher than July. The health administration have provided a hundred and seventy-two permits and notifications for various environmental licenses, premises and activities for August 2021, which is eleven percent lower than July. Various environmental protection activities performed this month, which includes inspection and treatment with insecticides of various sites in Mount Isa and Camewell, ant trapping mosquito treatment also done around waste management facility. Um, council donated a hundred and thirty native plants to Good Shepherd Church, which will be planted at Ilambi Community.
Thank you. And I, I was, I was actually there when the Good Shepherd had received those plants, and some of our staff were helping to dig them in, so it was quite an honour for, you know, little gestures from council that mean so much to the schools and community groups. So, it was, it was a really good initiative, so thank, thank you to the council staff for that one. Is there any more comments or questions on, on that one?
Yeah, sorry, through the, through the chair, I've, I've just got one for maybe Renee or Bernard. I, I haven't noticed any fires at the dump for a long time. There was a lot of time there where there was a lot of things happening, but I... Is that right or not? It's just that I haven't noticed any?
Sorry to spoil the record, but yeah, there was a minor fire.
Thank you Bernard.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Director, was that, that was reportable?
Uh, no, I don't believe it was.
Okay, that's fine.
Although we probably ought to use a well-worn phrase, an abundance of caution, we did report it anyway, but technically I don't think it was.
Thank you Bernard. Any, any other comments on this one? Councillor Coglan, are you fine?
Um, I have got a question with this one, with the licensed swimming pools. Whose responsibility is it after the pools are put in? And who, whose responsibility is it to make sure that all the pools in Mount Isa are compliant on a regular basis?
Through you, Madam Mayor. That actually comes down to land planning and land use. There's inspections taken out by the officers in planning and land use, so they do that on a regular basis for both new pools and existing pools to ensure the appropriate fencing is in place. Happy to bring back further information on that, but that occurs pretty regularly.
And through the chair, all real estate agents will make sure their properties have a certificate of currency as well.
Correct.
Is, is that, um, does that answer your question councillor Coglan?
Um, yeah, yeah, it does.
Yeah, and, and I think it's worth mentioning that they changed the, the pool fencing height. Was it two years ago? It went from twelve hundred to fifteen hundred, which is quite a significant jump, so... Well, I think it's fifteen hundred, but they definitely changed, they, they gave five years warning, and I think that was seven years ago now, so it's probably worth, if, if you have a pool, to go home and make sure you're compliant. I know, because I've got a pool.
Uh, Chair, just a note, and on another matter, um, the Flying Fox Roost, there's a note there about feasible solution for installation of irrigation lines. Uh, just wondering if there's an update on that, perhaps from the director?
Through you, Madam Mayor. This would normally go through to Chilera, as I understand it. We've had a quotation put in place, and we're not happy with that quotation, so we're looking at alternative ways of ensuring that there's irrigation there for the trees that have been planted there. I believe that's underway, is that correct, Director?
Yep.
Uh, yeah, there's a lot of good work being done out there, so yeah, it's important that we, we keep that water up to it, so to speak.
Anything else on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried.
Agree.
Thank you. Uh, and thank you councillor Coglan, because we just want to make sure you haven't dropped out, so that's great, you're, you're yelling out. All right, so that takes us to our next one, which is eleven point four, which is local laws overview report for August 2021, and we'll hand over to councillor Streton.
Uh, recommendations there, council receive and accepts the August 2021 local laws overview report.
Thank you councillor Streton. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, registration renewal payment period ended in thirty-first of August 2021. Animal, animal owners have taken advantage of the three-year registration with over seven hundred and fifty animals registered for three years. Highest number of local adoptions at the council pound was experienced in August. Council worked with the caravan park operators to help accommodate the influx of caravans that arrived in Mount Isa during the month of July and August by opening to overload caravan parks.
Thank you councillor Streton. Would anyone else like to comment or ask a question on this one? Councillor Coglan, you fine?
I'm fine with this one.
Terrific. Nothing else? All right, all those in favour?
Agree.
Thank you, thank you, that's carried. And that takes us to item eleven point five, which is waste management overview report for August 2021, and I believe that's councillor Streton again.
Yeah, council receives and accepts the August 2021 waste management overview report.
Thank you councillor Streton. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune.
Yeah. Our council have, has a report before it at this meeting to let the, um, contract for the design of the material recovery facility, building tenders for the MRF are currently being evaluated and should be complete by the end of the month. Analysts of the tenders include operational versus capital costs, revenue impacts of higher level of sorting, the cost impact of sorting commercial industrial waste in terms of both operation and landfill levy, and ongoing maintenance costs for this facility. A consultant has been engaged to review the site-based management plan for the landfill with last, with the last plan being undertaken in 2016. The purpose of this plan is to review the long-term operation strategy for the site, ensure operational efficiency and ensure the council is meeting all requirements under the environmental approval. The brief has also been extended to include the review of the day-to-day operation practices in term of labour and equipment. A total of thirty-eight domestic mobile garage bins replaced occurred in August.
Thank you. Would anyone like to comment or ask a question on this one?
Oh, we're through the chair. Madam Mayor, just a, a thank you to the public, the general public, I suppose, with domestic garbage collection. There's been issues with our trucks, they're getting old, and there's a, um, a fire in one of them. I'm not sure exactly how that happened, but, um, there's a one point two in the domestic garbage collection report there is domestic waste collection services were delayed during August, especially towards the end of the month. Waste management experienced a fire in the back of one of the garbage trucks, which had to be disposed of in the middle of Transfield Avenue. It is uncertain at this time what was the initial cause of the fire lighting. Uh, this fire caused damage to the computer and the hopper, requiring the truck to be off the road for a number of days. And due to the, just the age and the wear and tear on our fleet at the moment, we're still experiencing a number of breakdowns. So, the community on a whole has been very, very patient with us, and really do appreciate that patience.
Here, here, on that one. When's our new trucks coming?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Do we know when the waste trucks, have they been assembled at the moment, or?
Thank you, the sooner the better, I guess. Is this, is this report where we mention a street sweeper?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, no. That would be in the operations overview in the area for Director of Infrastructure.
Okay, the next one, all right, that's exciting, that's coming up. Okay, so, is there any more comments on that one?
Yeah, just, sorry, through the chair, Madam, Madam Mayor, the, um, seventy-seven tonnes of steel that we... What actually happens with that once we file it?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I believe we wait until we get to a critical mass, and then it's transported out through a sales process. But I'm happy to be corrected on that.
Yeah, I mean, there probably could be an opportunity there for the scrap, scrap deal or two.
Sorry, I, I think you're right on the knocker there. I think we actually have an arrangement with the scrap steel merchant. Once we reach a certain point, they purchase that from us, and then it's transported, uh, east. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Coglan, anything?
Uh, no, not on this one.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I just, can I just raise the note there about the Camewell tip remaining closed? I mean, that's really a, um, an interim thing where it's closed. We're not likely to open it under its current frame.
Through you, I, I might go to Bernard, because we've got a couple of ideas about what wasting Camewell may look like.
Yeah, I have a couple myself, so that'll be good to hear them.
Yeah, that'd be great to hear. Yeah, that'd be great to hear. Yeah, yeah, and it seems to be that people are putting their rubbish beside the skip now.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, all right, well, that'd be great to hear what, um, you come up with.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think we're thinking of maybe having a transfer station where it's just a drive-up ride.
Yeah, that's certainly...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I was just gonna suggest, um, I believe Crumber and some others have some successful little operations, and they're only small communities as well, so I think we can, um, probably follow that line. If you're not already doing it, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. There's no more questions? Uh, all those in favour? And that's carried.
Agree.
And that takes us to item twelve, which is infrastructure services reports, and twelve point one is major projects overview report. And which councillor would like to... Councillor Tully, I'll hand over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the infrastructure services report, twelve point one, major projects overview report. I recommend that council receive and accepts the August twenty twenty one major projects overview report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor McCray. Uh, councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of that motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just an overview, the contract works on the Camwell Hall are ninety percent complete with the new stumps being installed. The ground levels under the hall regraded and new drainage, uh, fascia and roof gutters installed. The half-court of basketball, a net ball at the Ellen Finlay Reserve in Camwell has been poured and the posts and rings installed, and the multi-purpose goals of the oval will be, well, they are installed because, um, from my understanding, it was done last week. Um, the work at the Splashes Aquatic Centre is progressing well, um, with the fencing and blockwork complete. Um, and that's it for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment or ask a question on this one?
Um, I would. I'd just like to say that the, um, walking paths are looking really fantastic that are popping up around town. And I've just had a few community members ask me about the Markham Valley Road project. Um, driving, I think that is completed, is that right?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, there is some... Uh, but apart from that, it isn't.
I was just wondering, I've been asked if there's plans to link them by a walking path at all?
There is. Their design has been completed and the aim is to seek, uh, funding.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else with a comment or question?
Just a, uh, a comment, Madam Mayor, on the report, the, um, on the Lake Julius Road causeway, there's been a fair bit of, um, positive community feedback to that. Um, I think it's going to be, uh, well-received, uh, uh, once, uh, well, it's already well-received, the information, the news that there are concrete cores will be put on that crossing. Um, and I think they're looking forward to, uh, the, um, completion of that, uh, project. Uh, the rain, while it was, uh, very well-received locally, uh, did put the, um, uh, construction works behind a little bit, but, um, it's, uh, great to see it moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Fortune. And, um, and I have it, and I was told that the town pool will be reopened in the second week of the school holidays. So I think it's going to be open on the twenty-fourth of September was the last update we got.
Yes, that, uh, that's correct. Um, the pool will be open on the twenty-fourth with the current construction. Um, there has been some maintenance issues with the pumps at the pump, uh, at the pool. So we're looking at sourcing those pumps, uh, and it's to be announced, uh, as to which part of the pool would affect.
Yep.
But, uh, we're looking at expediting some firing of those pumps so that it doesn't affect the...
Thank you. And I, and I guess if you are family staying in Mount Isa during the school holidays for the first week, definitely get on the Mount Isa City Council Facebook page, because we do have a lot of things going on during the holidays. And, um, it'd be great for the community to come along and support it. All right, if there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried.
Agree.
And that takes us to item twelve point two, which is works and operations overview report, and I believe that's councillor Tully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item twelve point two, the works and operations overview report, that council receives and accepts the August twenty twenty one works and operations overview report.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
McCray.
Thank you councillor McCray. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of that motion?
Thank you. Um, during August, the, uh, preparation delivery of the Mount Isa rodeo, Veterans Day and the Camo Wheel Drivers Parade, um, a lot of these, a lot of those, um, um, were, you know, affected by COVID in some way, but, um, they were all, you know, successful in their, you know, in their reduced ways, I guess. In, in preparation for spring and increased tourism surrounding rodeo and council freshened up the garden beds around the CBD. The CBD is looking, um, nice and clean, but just, you know, we're having problems with the plants and that, that we have laid. I think as I, you know, from the report, there's over three hundred plants that have been planted and, and, um, destroyed. So, I mean, that's obviously a problem that we, we're sort of looking at, but, um, you know, unfortunately, there's not a lot we can do at this stage about that. But, yeah, that's it, thank you.
Thank you councillor Tully. And, um, can I talk about the street sweeper? Oh, sorry, councillor McCray. Sorry, what was that?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I believe you seconded.
Oh, yes, I didn't have anything to add. I was looking at the next one ready to go. Um, so I think the, uh, most exciting thing that's happened, was it last month now, August? Yeah, was the street sweeper. Now, if you haven't had the chance to get online and, uh, or get on our Facebook page and have a look at some video of our sweet sweeper in action, it's fantastic. Scrubber, okay. The street scrubber. So, um, it, it is going to be, um, cruising around the CBD, um, um, over time, so, um, while we might not get to every street right at the moment, it will get to all the streets eventually. And hopefully, once we get them all up to scratch, maintaining is a lot easier. So, um, council staff are very excited about this street sweeper, and it is doing a great job from what I've seen already. All right, so if there's no other...
Yeah, sorry, I, I did, I did have, um, regarding the batch plant here highlighted for to say a few words that, um, as CEO, um, um, let the councillors know and that the, um, recently completed the Adele's Grove Lawne Hill National Park project, you know, through the council, and we successfully delivered, um, concrete over three hundred and sixty-five kilometres in five hours, and, um, the client was impressed with the council. So that was, you know, extremely well done to the batch plant and those involved.
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, we even made a profit on it too.
Well, that's always important.
Thank you, and it's always great to get positive feedback, so that's great to hear.
Yeah, and just one other thing regarding the, the COVID, um, you know, inoculation, the, uh, the vaccination clinic here in the, the, um, civic centre, that's working really well, and, you know, if you'd like to know the amount of people that have been vaccinated, whether it's their first jab or their second jab, certainly go online and it's on the website.
Sorry, so through you, Madam Mayor, I might just take the opportunity to say that, um, council will be having a free barbecue there on, um, Friday from, from eleven AM till two thirty. So if, um, residents or anyone else wants to pop down and get a jab and a snag, uh, that would be the time to do it. Um, you should be able, and it's a walk-in, you don't need to make a booking or anything else like that. And it may be that council, uh, is considering some additional incentives that may be applicable for those people who ensure that they're vaccinated as well. And that might be discussed later this week.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, thanks for that, David. I, I just saw that the NRL games in Rockhampton on the weekend, they were actually getting jabbed as they were going in, so they set up a clinic, you know, for the spectators before the NRL game, and people were actually getting, getting their shot before they walked in, so that was a pretty good initiative as well.
And look, Mount Isa was sort of leading the way. Um, we were, I think we were coming third in Queensland at one point, and now we've really dropped in numbers. So I can't encourage people enough to go down and, uh, get your first jab, and if you have had your first jab, make sure you follow up on your second jab. Uh, you're not only protecting yourself, your family, your friends, but you're also protecting the community. And, uh, we have a lot of vulnerable people in our community, so we really need to, um, get vaccinated so we can, um, get through this all together. So, um, and it hasn't, it couldn't be any easier than walking into the civic centre, so please go down.
Um, could I ask two questions, please?
Certainly councillor Coghlan.
Um, the footpath scrubbers one, is that, that's predominantly just for the CBD, um, to do a loop around there on a weekly basis or a fortnightly basis?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll start the answer. Um, councillors were sent out the route probably, goodness me, over a week ago, um, which showed the route of all the street sweepers and the street scrubber as well. As I understand it, the CBD, CBD is being done every night, uh, with the scrubber at this, at this point in time. And then there's a larger maintenance area where other two sweepers go as well. Uh, Director, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So I'm, I'm happy to re-mail out that route if councillors want that, um, route again. No worries.
And, and it actually does get off graffiti as well for ground two, which is great.
Um, my second question is, I've had a few, um, inquiry, not inquiries, but a few, uh, concerns. The contract, the concrete slabs that were laid in playway park for the barbecues and the table and benches, um, they are quite high around the edges for young children and people stepping up onto them. I haven't, I haven't seen them myself, but I have had a few, um, mums call me with concerns about how high they are. Would we be able to get someone to double-check those?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Um, the director's heard everything you've said, councillor Coghlan, and will ensure someone goes down and has a look at them from an health and safety point of view. Do you have anything to add, Director?
Through you, Madam Mayor, no, I don't, but I will have the manager of works and operations have a look at it.
Okay, thank you for that. Like I said, I haven't, I haven't seen them myself, but I have had a few mums ring me a bit concerned.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Does anyone?
That's all I have.
Thank you. So is, if no more questions, all those in favour?
Agree.
Thank you, and that's carried. Uh, that takes us to item thirteen, notions of motion, which is nil. And just before we adjourn, I just want to acknowledge that we have Grade Four St Joys coming into council tomorrow, Grade Four Gold. And they are going to be conducting a council meeting, and they will be electing a mayor. And they are going to bring all their persuasive arguments on why they should be the mayor of Mount Isa. So we're really looking forward to welcoming Grade Four Gold. And, uh, we hope this inspires them to be future leaders of Mount Isa, so big welcome to them tomorrow. And I will now adjourn, um, before we go into closed business. Thank you, everyone who's, uh, come along today. Thank you, everyone who's come along today.
I'd like to move that council considers the following confidential reports in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section 254j of the Local Government Regulation 2012. 14.1 Miners' Memorial Advisory Committee, 14.2 Contract for the Design of the Material Recovery Facility Building, 14.3 Proposed Campsite Management Agreement Camerewell Town Common Western Severance. Can I get someone to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. All those in favour? And that's carried. I'd like to move the motion that council moves out of closed council into open council. Can someone second that motion?
Move seconded fourteen, sorry.
Thank you councillor Fortune. All those in favour? And that's carried.
Right.
Thank you councillor Coglan, making sure you're still there. Alright, so that takes us to item fourteen, sorry, 14.1 which is the Miners' Memorial Advisory Committee. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'd like to move that council endorsed the inclusion of the mayor and councillor Coglan as ex officio members of the Miners' Memorial Advisory Committee, and that council endorses the chief executive officer selection and appointment of members from the nominations received for the Miners' Memorial Advisory Committee as listed below.
I'll read those.
They are John Moran, Steve Trevor, Robbie Catter MP, the honourable Bob Catter MP, Mick Backash from Backash Safety, Georgie Lucas, manager of Department of Resources, Tony McGrady, Ewan Raffa Seta, Luke Johnson, Adrian Cameron, Clint Brennan, Michael Mashkey, Luke Mandarin and Craig Clues. And that council approves contacting Glencore Mount Isa Mines to request a representative to be a member of the Miners' Memorial Advisory Committee, and that council amends the Miners' Memorial Advisory Committee terms of reference OM 28/05/21, item 6.1, to have the three-year term of the advisory committee commence from the 30th of September 2021 with an option to extend by 12 months if required.
Thank you. Can I get someone to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of... Oh no, sorry, it's closed business. All those in favour? Thank you. And I would also just like to... councillor Coglan?
Through, madam mayor. Councillor Coglan, you're happy to accept the nomination that was made by councillor McRae?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Madam mayor, you're happy to accept the nomination that was made by councillor McRae?
I'm honoured, yep. Thank you. All those in favour? And that's carried.
Yes.
And I would also like to acknowledge that the Miners' Memorial is on the 19th of September, all over Australia, so that's Sunday, so... Well, we don't have one in Mount Isa at the moment. Okay, alright, well, just mention that this Sunday is the anniversary of the Miners' Memorial. Okay, let's go. That takes us to item 14.2. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation for the contract for the design of the material recovery facility building?
I'll move, madam mayor.
Thank you.
Councillor Ward, the contract for RFT 2021-48 Consultative Services for Design of Material Recovery Facility Building to Mo Design Corp Pty Ltd for the sum of $231,000 GST exclusive.
Thank you. Would like... Someone like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. All those in favour? And that's carried.
Agree.
Thank you councillor Coglan. And that takes us to our last report which is 14.3, the Proposed Campsite Management Agreement Camerewell Town Common Western Severance. Would someone like to move that motion?
I'll move, madam mayor. That council agreed to enter into a campsite management agreement for the management of the Georgina River, Lake Francis and Canal and camping area, areas with the new lessees over land described as part of lot 21 on survey plan 135293.
Seconded.
Thank you. Thank you W Mayor. Thank you councillor Fortune for seconding that. All those in favour?
Agreed.
And that's carried. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. The time is 10:37 and I now declare...